Thank you. Now going to call the Wednesday. Yeah. February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, Governor Healy signed into law chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, and Act Making Appropriations for Fiscal Year twenty twenty three, which includes a two-year extension of the option of public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law.
I thought of that.
Master in law, chapter thirty A, section twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Thank you. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner State.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea, the chairman is present. We certainly have a call. Next item. Executive session. We do have an executive session scheduled today.
Yes, sir.
We could have a motion under section.
I'll do it.
Commissioner Collins.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to master in law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one, subsection A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Before we take a vote, I will say that we will be returning to full open session to complete the agenda of our February twenty eighth meeting after the executive session. Our executive session, Commissioner State.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And the chair votes.
And you so declare.
And I so declare that we need an executive session. The chair votes yes, we're an executive session.
You don't see any of that?
Thank you, John. Thank you. We're back on the record on our Wednesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four meeting. Welcome all. Commissions, I am number four.
Chairman, I move the approval of the meeting minutes of two twenty one twenty four presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Number five, we have appointments today.
Yeah, it was still early, so maybe go to number six.
Maybe, that would do like. We go to number six. Thank you. Number six, public comment. Each week we have a public comment section in our agenda. Is there anyone out in Zoom land that has any public comment whatsoever? Director Cronin, has anyone contacted you?
No, sir.
Public comment. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to number seven. Old business, I have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you want.
Yes.
Please move the following. These are, the following are at the Norfolk County Aristocle School. I move the following. Number one, notice address change for Amanda Kamara of Metfield. She is a one eighty-three day instructor at the rate stated effective two twenty two twenty four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is, it is a vote. Next.
Next, I move approval of a notice of appointment for Madeline Groan of Boston as an animal science foreperson, herdsman, at the rate stated, replacing Evan Magita, and the effective date is two twenty nine twenty four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third, Mr. Chairman, notice of appointment, move appointment. Move approval of the appointment for Joseph Donahue of Avon as a cafeteria worker, the rate stated, replacing Lisa Watkins, effective two twenty nine twenty four.
Second.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last one is, I'm going to move approval of a notice of appointment, appointment intent. Okay, for Sally Lumbadi, a Walpole ass, cafeteria worker, at the rate stated, replacing Melissa No, effective two twenty nine twenty four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Next, in maintenance.
Uh, next, we, I move approval of the notice of promotion for Robert McDonough of Quincy, Mass. as senior building custodian. Uh, the rate stated, effect day, replacing Sean Peckinon.
Peckinon is right.
Got it right. Effective three four twenty four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Um. Is the next one we're holding on to?
Well, why don't you read it into the record and we'll take a motion.
All right. Uh, move, move the motion for the notice of promotion for Jonathan Thomas of Foxborough as the director of administrative services, and rate stated, uh, replacing Noel Debona, effective three four twenty four. So moved.
Uh. Director Cronin.
Um, if it's appropriate, I think you need a second and then we'll talk about it.
Yeah, okay, I'll second it for, for discussion.
Sure. So if the commissioners would indulge, um, this particular hire came over as a blue paper and the Director of Human Resources has some questions remaining on the process as they adhere to the new employee handbook. I believe the HR director will be reaching out to the register today to ask for some additional information regarding this hire. So at this time, we respectfully request you hold this promotional opportunity until we resolve those issues.
Okay. I'm fine, I'm fine with that. So, uh, do you want to withdraw your motion?
Okay, well, we draw the motion and move, move table.
Place it on hold, but we're, we're going to get to it.
Yeah.
So I'll courtesy, I'll withdraw the motion. And I'll just move that we table action on the promotion for Jonathan Thomas, uh, for director of administrative services.
To a later date.
Until, you know, those things are clarified.
Great. Okay. I'll, I'll second. So is that a motion to table? So I'll second your motion to table.
That'd be appropriate.
Uh, there was no action taken on the original motion. So you made a friendly amendment. Now you have the amendment, the friendly amendment to motion to second, and now you take the vote.
Right.
Motion will hold the uh, promotion as director of administrative services. For review, all in favor.
Aye.
Next one, notice to change of.
All right, this one's pretty simple. I move approval of the address change for Lisa Roberts of Foxborough as executive assistant. Uh, and this is for the rate stated, and effective date three three two four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye, that good.
But not any payroll expense warrants, if you will, please.
Yes, sir. I'm doing quickly. Get it in. All right, move approval. We only have three, Mr. Chairman. Uh, number one, I'll approve, move approval of twenty four dash thirty four, payroll of the county, move the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred eight dollars and nine cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second, move approval of oh two dash oh four dash twenty four, the expense of the county, move approval of five hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars, fifty-five cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
And coming up later, move approval for an opera award to the town of Rhythm, twenty four dash thirty five, move the summer fifty thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars to the town of Rhythm, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Okay.
Number ten. Report on the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one. We have seven minutes before we open our budget hearing, but if we could take care of this, it would be better. All the better.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of items for you. The, uh, the ARPA program currently is in receipt of three closeout plans. We got our latest from Walpole today. They're due on tomorrow's leap day, so Friday, the first. Um, we will be working directly with all communities to receive their plans and assess them in anticipation of, um, how to close out their respective grants before, um, beginning of the fiscal year. So the next few months, our team will be poring over these plans to ensure that the obligations have a secure plan, um, a timely plan to ensure that the obligations are done, certainly before the end of December and so forth. Um, furthermore, I just wanted to state that we've received a request from Clifton Larson to consider a rate increase associated with their services. Um, you may recall, they gave us the first, uh, rate increase since we were under contract with them last fiscal year. Uh, this rate increase is modest, but it reflects sort of the intensity of the work they're about to perform over the last few years of this, uh, grant. And I want to let the commissioners know that I've been in touch with the treasurer from Plymouth County to assess his feelings on the rates and to ensure that we all kind of agree on the same rate. That's pretty much how we've done it to date, so there's no disparity in service costs. Um, so over the next week or two, I'll be working with Clifton Larson on, on that matter. Um, I do think there'll be some modest increase, but I'm waiting for them to show me how many projected total hours they intend to incur between the closeout and the monitoring phase that I've mentioned to you before. So those are the items that are most prominent.
Yes, just Clifton Larson, not the other accounting firm, right?
Correct, yes. Uh, so the other accounting firm is, um, Powers and Sullivan. I think I mentioned that they have recently been bought out by Markham.
Right.
So they're now going by the terms, Powers and Sullivan, Markham. Uh, their rates are not changed, unchanged. And then with respect to the grant from Rhythm. Um, this fifty thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollar grant is to support public health. It's another advanced award uh, for the town of Rhythm to purchase, um, a replacement for their two thousand twelve Ward Explorer Advanced Level Three, uh, sorry, Level Class Five ambulance. Uh, their existing ambulance experienced a catastrophic failure. Um, at the advice of technicians and emergency vehicle consultants. Um, this vehicle was decommissioned. These funds will be used to replace that item. They'll be purchasing off of state bid list, uh, through the Colonial Municipal Group.
And how much is?
Fifty thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Five oh six.
That is, uh, that is the item before you this afternoon. They've already approved.
Right.
Right. That's all I have for ARPA this week, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Does that close out Rhythm?
It does. I think they're close. I've asked for a report on that. Uh, probably have to get an update on that next week.
How much we giving them so far, do you know? I will find out. We can find out.
They've been active, but, um, they, they're like Milton. They, they come in and go with certain specific projects. Um, they're not large grants, but, um, I know you've given them money for a park.
Correct.
Um, a little bit of a garden and so forth, so I'll get back to you on that.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I think it's close to one thirty.
Correct. If I have no objection, I'm going to take Nancy first for one minute.
Yeah.
And then go right to the budget session. Uh, it's one thirty. We have no bid today. However, we do have a contract award. Good afternoon, Nancy, if you could.
Good afternoon. This is our contract for Pitney Bowes's lease of a new mailing equipment for the Walson recreational facility. Uh, the Mass State contract OFF three nine pricing, it's eighty-four seventy-eight a quarter, total of three thirty-nine twelve per year, and the total lease for five years is one thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty cents.
That's for postage machine?
Yes. We lease them.
Any questions? This is a postage machine at the Walson. Is it replacing a?
It's replacing an old one, yes.
Okay.
And it is for a period of five years.
And you bought it off the state bid.
We got pricing came from the state bid, yes.
Any questions?
What's the total amount for that?
The total amount for the five years is one thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty cents.
Seems, seems cheap.
It's a, it's a small machine.
Okay, okay. I don't know much about boards and chains. Okay, I think, I think we're in order. If you have any questions.
Oh.
Okay.
I move approval of the, uh, of the, of the bid, Pitney Bowes is submitted, uh, for the lease of milli equipment for County Walson Recreation Facility in accordance with the submitted and the rate stated uh, by appurciation, effective this day.
Today.
Two twenty seven, actually. Twenty eight?
Today's the twenty eighth.
This is twenty seven.
Let me fix that.
Yeah, that's two twenty eight, two twenty eight, two four, so moved.
Second.
Sign it?
Motion made, seconded.
Yes, we sign.
Okay.
All in favor.
Aye.
This concludes the matter of Pitney Bowes. Bowes, you have anything else, Nancy?
No, there was a sheet at the end, just for your signature also. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, before she go, real quick, what was the one that we had the problem with, where we rejected a bid?
That was the underground storage tags.
Right.
Check your references for the next loan. We should have something next week.
Next week, great, okay. Thank you. That involves the school, right?
Okay, yes. One thirty, we're going to do uh, budget hearings today, fiscal year budgets. We have two, the registry deeds is first and engineering is second, so Register, why don't you come on up and have a seat?
Yeah, there's a first, second, and last.
First, second, and last. First. Second.
The one, page nine, this one?
Yeah.
Have one?
Uh, it's right, it's the first one in your public book.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Right.
Good afternoon, Register. How are you?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Hello, Commissions.
Good for how you doing?
This is Register O'Donnell. Today's subject is fiscal twenty five budget. We have a hand-delivered letter and the budget is the first one in the book. For your attention. The floor is yours, Register.
Thank you very much. Uh, what's the, I don't know if you've reviewed the budget, uh, certainly if you have any questions, uh, have you reviewed, have you reviewed the budget or?
Yes, I have.
Okay, all right.
We have a couple of questions.
Sure, sure. Uh, so, uh, to lead off, I mean, um, you know, in my, in the letter I sent over, you know, um, there were two grade fifteen positions. Those are union positions, not non-union, uh, again, for promotional opportunities. Yeah. I recognize, uh, whatever happens, it happens here at the board. Um, but, uh, some aspects of the budget, uh, you know, our budget's been cut, you know, I mean, trying to move forward here, they move forward positively. But I just want to call your attention that, for instance, printing. Uh, our printing went up and it's because we're trying to catch up. We had some busy years, over two hundred and five thousand documents uh, were recorded into, into twenty twenty three. So a lot of the printing needs we have to catch up with. We, we, uh, and also, um, I believe um, you sent, signed a contract. Do you remember when you signed the index printing contract?
Is, is that the printing unlimited? We just signed it last week.
That's a separate, I mean, uh, that was another, there was another one that deals with the printing of indexes, which is town book bindery. Same, same thing. I, I know costs have gone up.
On a free term.
Yeah, exactly. So I know, uh,
I think we signed that too, but I know we just did bring a limited, but in a meeting and two.
It, right. And I guess that's what I'm pointing out, that contracts have been signed and, you know, we have to, to make sure we have money to pay those contracts. And busy or slow, these indexes have to be printed. Um, we're required to print them. And, uh, and again, uh, you know, we've been respectful of the spending freeze, but a lot of these items have been put off. Um, there was a spending freeze before this year. There was a couple this year. So again, we need, uh, you know, that, that was a, an amount that, uh, uh, went up, uh, and it, it's needed. And then other areas, certainly it was needed. I know, uh, professional services, I mean, we, um, you know, we, we, we use things for review, uh, to have the systems tested, not, not the IT system. We have the accounting reviews, system reviews, uh, things of that sort. So, um, some of the requests, um, they're needed. I, they, they can't be zeroed out, uh, like they have been. They're needed, uh, to, to ensure that we keep the standards, uh, that we have. Um, you know, and, uh, uh, they're needed. Uh, they've been used in the past and, uh, and again, I, I come here wanting to move things forward. We still have an operation running. We may have had disagreements on things and still do have disagreements on things, but there's, there's a budget that needs to be approved so that we can continue to provide, uh, the quality services that we did. Um, you know, I pointed out, I, again, are, uh, the, the raises in there, there were no other raises other than, you know, step raises or, um, the percentage. What was the percentage you sent over?
Two point two five.
Two point two five, you know, so that's what was sent over, you know, and, and, uh,
Okay.
And that's, 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 you know, everybody gets, that's every, you know, that's everybody. That was the directive that we got, uh, in the letter that came over. Um, I believe it was from Director Cronin, um, and, and that's, uh, in there. But I did point out the two promotions, so, you know, that obviously adds the temporary one. You know, that's, that's your decision to make. Um, on temporary monies, um, I, I, I would point out this. I'm just going to hand this letter. And it ties into this year, but it ties into the budget we're talking about. We had our temporary money zeroed out. And people like Gary Lubin, Rich Kennedy, Rich Sarani, you know, uh, we're out of money. And we're out of money. We've gone to you before, but it's all because our money got zeroed out. So this request that I'm hand-delivering to each one of you is to increase the temporary monies, here's for Director Cronin, for this year. Uh, because, you know, they need, need to get paid. Some of the temporary monies went to the IT. Um, but that doesn't cover all the registry services these people provide. Uh, so, you know, we can't tap into what went to the IT department. Um, and the reason why I, I mention that, it needs to be done this year and attached to your letter is the deeds excise. Um, and the deeds excise from July first twenty twenty three through January thirty first, and I know there was some reference to this, these numbers before, and I don't want to keep belaboring it. But the registry share, by law, we get forty percent is one million, thirty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. That is for fiscal year twenty four that we're in now. So certainly there's enough money that's been accumulated. That's the registry share. And if you look at the breakdown, it has the county share, yes, uh, eighty-nine point three seven five percent goes to the state, but that's through January thirty first. The registry share is almost one point one million dollars. That's more than enough to cover the, uh, transfer request that is being asked for for fiscal year twenty four. And I would just ask, tying it into the budget that we're here today, that we've asked for an increase, we've asked for temporary monies and, um, ask, you know, that that should be in. It was in before, in years past, it's been as high as seventy-five thousand. Um, but that needs to be done so that people, you know, good people, yeah, they've, they've retired, but they, they provide a service, uh, to the registry and, uh, and I just advocate on behalf of people like Rich Kennedy that it's worked, you know, for the county since nineteen eighty-seven and Gary Lubin, you know, and Rich Sarani Services dates back to the nineties. So, you know, just, uh, I, I, I just think it's, it's the interest of fear. It's in the interest of fairness, but if it's all about money, then, then if you could take a look at what's, what's attached to that letter, um, you know, it shows that there's, there's more than enough, uh, to, to pay.
Yes, I want to make sure I get the right, I can ask the right question. So you said almost one point one. I, I see one million, thirty-four thousand. I get the right mission?
Yeah.
You rounded up.
I rounded, I, I said one oh three four, and of course I rounded.
That was a big round. I'm like, what, I got the wrong sheet? All right. Your math is very, okay. All right, but I got the right call. Okay. That's all right.
All right. I rounded up sixty, sixty six.
You're like, one point one, I'm like, yeah, right.
Bad for government workers.
So I know we've had our disagreements. I'm not trying to be argumentative. Is the four point two five what we say the percent should be?
No, that's what, that's what, no, that's what the state law says it should be. I mean, so in other words, the deeds excise that gets collected.
Right.
By law, it just, just gets distributed every year. It was distributed, and this isn't, you know, Register O'Donnell. I mean, you know, Paul Harold did this, Barry Hannan, when I was here, did it. Uh, here's the percentages, and the four point two five is that forty percent statute. Uh, chapter sixty-four D, section twelve A, says that the portion that goes to the county, sixty percent goes to the county for county operations, forty percent goes for, uh, the registry for monetization, uh, operations, uh, automation, uh, and, and, and so the four point two five and the six point three seven five, when you factor it out, that's the, um, that's the sixty forty split.
So this is, this is not fiscal twenty five?
No, no, this is, it just.
You are submitting that we take care of these gentlemen, these positions, based upon the available money on the school.
Yes, I wanted to show that.
I'm sure I got it straight in my head.
Thirty, uh, it, it was a request for thirty thousand dollars to, to, to get us through the rest of the year. And I just want to show, I mean, and I recognize not every department has streams of revenue. The legislature has given streams of revenue to the registry, and I just wanted to show that one million, thirty-four thousand, five sixty-one, seventy-six has come in through January thirty first, which would more than cover, uh, the, the, the request that's being made, as you said, for fiscal twenty four.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I got that. Thank you for your information.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any, any other questions on this subject?
Oh, I'm not done with twenty five. But I, I was trying to clarify my head.
Wait, hold on.
Because she switched over to twenty four.
Because I have a question.
Do you still have twenty four question?
Well, on this, maybe I missed it. This is not in, this money is not in this.
No.
This would be.
No, uh, it, it would be an adjustment, uh, Mr. Chairman. So this is the gross.
And then you're asking for a twenty five.
So, you, you, so how could we pay it? First of all, I think we could pay it because, you know, people, there, there's, there's things in the budget. We have money in the budget to, to, to pay for that, but usually you do it through deeds excise, and I wanted to show this isn't subtracting. The only way we can subtract that is if there was an approval at this board and the advisory board. So this is the gross.
Okay.
And then that would, uh, come out of that.
This would be a separate thing. He's at, what would be supplemental?
Probably, yeah.
The county advisory board, right? To move this. But this, I'm pulling this out. This is nothing to do with the budget. I'm not being, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head.
Okay.
Okay. So can I go back to one thing you said? Are you done? I don't want to interrupt you.
No, no.
You said printing. So is printing, where was the printing? I have, I have here.
That was on, um, uh, on page, uh, two of, of seven. If you go into like, you know, down, you know, two, two ninety-five and, and, and around there. I'm trying to point out that we, you know, we have contracts. Commissioner Shea mentioned a couple of the ones that were signed, and, you know, there are costs. Um, and also, you know, there are contractual services, uh, you know, for Iron Mountain and things like that.
Office machines, forty-five, your request.
Office machines, we, uh,
Let's say five thousand.
What, what code is that?
Um, I'm at five two, seven five, five two seven six.
Okay, that's, that's up further.
The big thing.
Yeah, yeah, that's like main, well, maintenance contracts, out of that, uh, two seventy-five, that's like maintenance contracts and supplies.
Okay.
And, you know, with, you know, I know inflation is apparently coming down, but in other areas, uh, costs have gone up.
Okay, sorry, my bad. Printing binding, I got it. So it's under five two nine five?
Yes.
Printing binding, uh, last year was one fifty-nine, I'm, I'm assuming, and this year you're asking for one eighty-nine?
Yeah, because of the, of the A increasing costs, and we have put off contracts, and, and some of those contracts were signed. Uh, one with town book bindery. We have an obligation, and we've, we've held off for a few years now to print the indexes. Uh, also, uh, you know, just to, to, you know, I mentioned, uh, and again, indexes have to be printed, whether it's a busy or slow, you know, we, we, and what we do is we try to accumulate them. So you're not doing it every year, but it needs to be done. And of course, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, what's a busy year? That some of that document surge in twenty twenty-three carries over as far as, you know, getting things bound and, and things of that sort.
So how about five two nine nine, uh, contract from forty to fifty? Want to talk about that? What's that going up to? Just asking.
Well, because of, of, of things like that. That's for like Iron Mountain, um, you know, uh, and again, Iron Mountain deals with our disaster recovery protocols, you know, uh, uh, there's, uh, expenses like Iron Mountain, uh, contractual services, even things like, I mean, we give employees water, Poland Springs and things like that. So it's not that, you know, again, we want a good work environment for people. Also in that, um, that section, I mean, uh, microfilm has gone up. Um, you know, you know, Kodak, you know, they're kind of the only game in town, and so, um, you know, we, we've used Kodak to, to microfilm. I know we may be looking at going outside like, um, you know, uh, that as far as contractual, but that's some of the expenses that, that go, go into that section that we have. Um, you know, disaster recovery protocols that we have to, that I believe we have to stick with, and we also have contractual services. We have like things like Poland Springs. We also, um, use that for, you know, Kodak, uh, We also use that for, you know, Kodak outside for microfilm. But we may have to use contractual services because it's tough to get the microfilm. I mean, we've always tried to do it in-house, but we may have to, you know, look at offloading that as well.
Do we have the microfilm? It sounds like it's an old fashioned, it's been around forever. Is that something you have to do?
By statute, that is one of the requirements, that you have to microfilm every document. That's by statute. And when you think about it, it might seem old fashioned. But I like to think all the things we do at the registry, and I know it's, you know, there's no line team. We've got a good staff. We've had support here on things like that.
Yeah.
You know, we do take drive backups. We do things like that. But even printing the books, it's another form of redundancy that protects the records. But think about what happened down in New Orleans when registries got wiped out. How do you recreate a registry? If you're depending on everything in that building and it gets wiped out, you get problems. And I mean, we got a fire February 6th, 2021. So, you know, luckily it wasn't bad. So even though the microfilm's old fashioned and it certainly will be, you know, if something happens to that building, a difficult process to get up and running. I think it's good to have the microfilm and it's shipped to various places. You know, it's not onsite. It's, Iron Mountain has, you know, various places, New York, Massachusetts. I know the Take Drive goes to Rhode Island. But the microfilm may seem old fashioned, but we got to do it by statute. And I know some of the things you, you know, we've got to recognize, you got to do things by statute. It's old fashioned, but in a way, you can now go and recreate the registry if something bad happens.
So the Iron Mountain, it's offsite?
It's not onsite. No, we prepare it, but we get it offsite. And that includes the take drive backups.
I'm asking probably a rhetorical question, but with the emergence of our IT department, you know, I imagine this might even apply for the schools, but you know, you're not the agenda. So don't feel picked on. But I wonder if it's not better to consolidate all those kinds of things that are IT into the IT budget or into one department, something worth talking about, looking at, you know, down the road. All right, Mr. Chairman, if I may, two other questions. So it jumps at you. Can't help it. Under 52, where am I now? 35, legal fees go from 7 to 100,000. And then professional technical, I guess, was zeroed out and it goes to 40. So that's your big hit. Those are your big increases in your budget, right?
Right.
On that?
Let's, let's.
Got the elephant.
And you brought it up. Well.
Take me, John, that's my question.
You guys brought it up. So we'll work our way backwards.
Yeah.
Because it is the elephant in the room and I appreciate that you brought it up, actually. But as far as professional technical, that's what I'm talking about. You know, in the past, and you could see, I mean, this doesn't show even past expenditures. Because I'll tell you, past expenditures in group two, if you look at the front page, and I'm going to answer the question, but on page 101.
Hold on.
Look back at fiscal '22, $415,000 expended in group two.
Right. Let me see what you have.
Did you get the cover page that looks like this? It has kind of a breakdown?
I'll find it. Yeah.
Well, if you have it, and again, it drops off at fiscal '21, but I think in fiscal '20 or fiscal '29, in group two, it was actually 519,000. So again, broad answer is, one of the reasons, that number has to go up. We've taken cuts on it, but if you look at past years of expenditures, it's not unreasonable to increase it. Now, the 40,000, look at, we, you know, it's been zero, but you can look back a couple of years ago, 42,000. We do system reviews. I'm not talking about IT. I'm talking about systems, accounting review, soundness and, you know, practice, you know, business practices. These are all done, you know, by getting, you know, professionals and technical people in to do it. And we have to do it. I mean, you know, this registry didn't get to be, you know, and, you know, other people say it. I'm not saying it to trump that. It's, I would say, if not the best, one of the best registries in Massachusetts. It's known for that. It's always been known for that. But you've got to allow us to run it like a business where in the past we have, where you could bring in people to review systems, to review how, you know, what's going on with fees, for instance, or just accounting practices, you know, on our systems, not anything that does with audit or anything like that. Safety and soundness, running it like a business. We did that in the past. And if you look at that sheet, if it's the same sheet, fiscal '22, look what was expended. It's, you know, $42,000. So we gotta, we gotta get back to something so that we can, you know, keep the standards that Norfolk County's known for. Now.
Okay, I see that one.
The legal.
The legal.
All right. We obviously have disagreements. And they're in court. And from my perspective, and I've said it before, and I know it's just, you know, comments jokingly made here, like, oh, you know, I shouldn't be representing the registry on my own. Just shouldn't. You know, and that's where we're at. I just shouldn't. It's just, you know, I mean, everyone has a right to independent legal counsel. And again, what I'm about to say, I'm not, I'm not coming here to be offensive or to, you know, or anything. You ask a question, it just does not seem right. And again, and again, this case, the first case, the case that I had to do pro se, the judge made a decision. And then an appeal was taken, okay? And, you know, everyone has a right to appeal. I'm not questioning that. But here you are, you have an attorney appealing it and his costs. And before the appeal, there was a motion for reconsideration and the judge ruled against the county then. And I'm just saying, I'm not the one driving this legal bus on that case. You know, the case was decided and, you know, I mean, I don't think the case should have come and I'll do respect to Director Cronin. I don't think the transfers, that's just routine. So why did that go up? It has to go up. This board is appealing a case that the registry won. And we should have an attorney to deal with that. And you guys do, in the interest of fairness, in the interest of equal access to justice, in the interest, I think someone mentioned one time, unclean hands or clean hands, whatever the terminology. Again, not to offend anybody, but it's an interest of fairness. This board is appealing that case. You have an attorney. And the registry should. Now, you may say, well, where'd you get 100,000? I hope we all agree, I mean, that the registry should have more than 7,000. I mean, we're involved in litigation. And there's the second case. And again, reasonable people can disagree on that one. It deals with statutes, but from the registry's position, for over 30 years, it was done a certain way. The registry was allowed to accumulate the deeds excise. The statute 64D, section 12A, does a 60-40 split. And reasonable people disagree. Well, that involves lawyers, you know, and lawyers need to be paid. And it's just an interest of fairness. That's the second case. And, you know, you people probably know better than I the status of that case. So where does the 100,000 come?
So let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Aside, if I may politely.
Yeah.
If you take those two cases to where they were, right, as you elaborated pretty clear, is there any other legal money you need for the operation of the registry? Like for cases that might come up if somebody sues you or go against some title thing or something like that?
In the past, we've never asked for a high amount. I mean, you know, you'd always have, I consider the seven or, I think seven dates back years. I think that's a nominal amount. I mean, the registry, as I said, I mean, in my tenure, has never sued anybody, but here we are in a lawsuit with you guys. It's unfortunate, but that's how it is. We certainly should have more than 7,000. And, you know, would that cover things? Sure. We're not in the business of suing people. That's for sure. And you might say, 100,000 seems high. And again, this is all information from the Treasurers Office. In fiscal '22, the total legal bills received from the Treasurers Office that the commissioners paid for, we're not talking the Aggie School, it was $185,228.64, of which Attorney Lopez, who's on the case with us, and I know he has other, I know, we're not the only case, respectfully, Commissioner Collins, we are not, I'm not solely responsible for the legal bills. There's other cases that don't involve the registry, involves other, a town and a group or something of that sort. But Attorney Lopez, in fiscal '22, that's July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, by the math that was given to us, was $167,144.14. And again, the approved line item was 95,000. Your approved line item that year was 95,000 and you spent 185,228. In fiscal '23, last year, the total bills that we receive, and again, not counting what goes on at the Aggie School or anything like that, but bills that the Norfolk County Commissioners for their representation through that line item that was mentioned, code 235, spent $139,284.48, of which Scott Lopez got 96,828.98. And then for this year, and again, we only got it through December 31st, 2023, $88,741.98 was spent in legal services just from the county commissioners, not counting the Aggie School, of which Scott Lopez got 70,305.98. I don't fault attorneys for getting paid, but it just doesn't seem right. You know, I guess the lawsuit that I'm involved in, that I'm representing myself, and now you people appeal it and I have to, you know, become an appellate attorney, which I'm not, but that's how it is. We're not costing the registry anything, but it's not right. And I'm not trying to embarrass anyone with these numbers. Legal bills are legal bills. But it, I'm hard pressed to see how these legal bills can be spent and then we only get 7,000. And that's not counting the Aggie School. The Aggie School in a budget a couple of years ago had a line item of $40,000. So if the Aggie School's getting $40,000, why is the registry only getting 7? So I'm, I'm just, you know, making that pay, you know. You asked it. I try to answer questions, you know, the way they have to be. And it's not meant to be argumentative. It's meant to persuade that that number should be, I mean, you know, look at the numbers you're spending. I mean, 100, almost $186,000, not counting the Aggie School. I mean, 100,000 is nothing compared to that, that number. And I would, I would say that, you know, through, through December 31st, you've spent 88,000. You're on track to spend 190,000. So I don't think, is it unfortunate that I have to put a number in? Yes, it is. But it's not right that you have legal representation and the registry doesn't. But it's especially not right when, you know, we went to court, the judge ruled against what County Director Cronin did, and then you asked for reconsideration. I have to, you know, fight that. And now it's in the appeals court and you have a right to do it, but it just, that's what I'm saying.
All right. Well, so my comment would be, thank you for explaining. But really, you did, no, you did a good summary. I can't possibly see 100,000. I think you're trying to reach there a little bit. And I say that politely, but I understand your rationale based on numbers. I think it's unfortunate that we have lawsuits against each other. I wish we could work together, all together as a team and maybe we'll get there somehow.
I do have a question that's very basic here.
I think it's just a, it goes against our principle in terms of even wasting taxpayer money, that we're fighting like this.
That's correct.
You know, shooting each other in the foot because we're both supposed to be representing our taxpayers and our citizens. And I wish there was other ways we could do this. I was just saying that, as politely as I can. And not throwing the gauntlet down. I'm not throwing it. I'm just trying to be, you know, I just feel that number just jumps out at you. The 40,000, it does, when I look back, you had 42 several years ago. And then it went down to nothing and it's back up. So that, that might be something to take a look at, but the, the legal fee, it's just, you know, it's horrible. It's so high, you know, it's just, maybe these things will get resolved. So maybe the money won't be needed. Maybe the sky won't fall out tomorrow or next week. But I mean, I'm just saying, I wish there was another way. I just say that publicly. I wish there was another way. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Well, since that, we're talking about that. I, the first thing I read was the February 7th letter, which accompanied this. I got to paragraph four. And I'm the only one sitting at this table who's not aware. However, I understand.
February 7th letter.
English. Second letter?
Yep.
Right, the February 7th.
Yes, got it.
I mean, I'll look it up. And it says it would be a disservice to process, it'd be a disservice to process not to point out that the registry of deeds has requested legal money. In the interest of fairness, the Norfolk registry of deeds should have the same access to legal representation that other Norfolk County departments and entities have. It is my, it is my hope that things will be moving in a better direction this year. However, the reality, and this is my sentence that puts me over the edge. However, the reality is that it was your choice to elect to appeal the court ruling. How did we get to the point of having to appeal at a court ruling?
Because.
How did the red, these three commissioners get in, in court?
Well, for this, to be honest with you, this particular case, it just boggles my mind because I've been on your side of, as a commissioner. And you people have been in municipal government. In group two, you were allowed by statute to move money around. Now, County Director Cronin, for whatever reason, maybe he was new or whatever, and he blocked the transfers. That created the case. The money should have been moved around. It's allowed. And to be honest with you, there's actually a memo from one of your staff people that says there's no approval needed from the county commissioners. There's no approval needed by the advisory board because it's an approved and funded position. And regarding general law, chapter 35, 32, fourth paragraph. So, Mr. Chairman, I put that letter in not to offend, but to point out.
I think.
To point out that there's a legal.
Actually, it's, it's quite clever and it's, it's to your credit as an attorney, but I had to look at it two, three times.
I read it twice.
And I wouldn't be in court if you didn't start it, right? And I don't know how else to say it.
I wouldn't have been in court if.
I don't want to violate any.
No, you're right.
Legal memo jumbo because I do it.
Maybe you didn't know what County Director, maybe you didn't know, Mr. Chair, respectfully, maybe you didn't know what County Director Cronin did. But the judge ruled favorably for the registry that in that limited circumstance, which is an approved and funded position, that the person who's the authorized official of the registry has a right to move the money. So that's why there was an appeal. The judge ruled against County Director Cronin. Maybe you didn't know he was blocking these budget moves. I have no idea. You know, but that's, you know, I would hope you would have known. Because, yeah, and so, so when you, so let's put it this way, Mr. Chair, respectfully. There was a case, County Director Cronin, I disagree with this decision. And the court said that he did it unlawfully. He was wrong. So you lost. Now you're appealing it. You have a right to appeal. I mean, that's, but.
Well, then why do we talk about it in midstream? I mean, I got to go to every little in town and hear from every selectman in this one, half of the story. And I don't have to tell the other half because I'm told by my lawyer.
The story.
Don't get into it. So I don't. And I just say there's two sides to every story.
Well. And that's why, right, and that's why they have court. And maybe if we sat at a table, I think every, this is municipal 101. When you have money in an approved group, whether it's the DPW chair in Canton or Norwood, has a right to move money within a group code and approved budget. It is, it is in municipal finance. It is, it's been in county finance, Mr. Chair, respectfully. So should there have been a fight? Absolutely not, because those requests should have been approved. They were. Director Cronin elected not to do it. And the judge ruled in favor of the registry, so we could have just ended it there. And so that's, the reason I wrote that letter wasn't to be clever. It was just to make clear that, hey, I'm asking for legal fees and this is why, not legal, but legal funds. So, I mean, what part of the case, Mr. Chair? I mean, the fact that we're fighting, yes, I get it, but the Norfolk Superior Court ruled in favor of the registry, saying that it was unlawful what Director Cronin did. So it could have ended there.
Could have, but it didn't.
But I, I didn't, it was in your hands not to end it. What, what your attorney did was ask the judge to reconsider his decision. He tried to say the judge was wrong. The judge, I think his words were, after careful review, I deny the motion for reconsideration. And then you people elected to go to the appeals court, which is your right.
That's on appeal. That's the transfer one. But the other one had to do with the whole deeds excise.
Deeds excise.
And you started that one, didn't you? I'm not, didn't you initiate that? No, no, I know you started it, but that was you, no, that argument began with your position that you, we were.
Actually, it was a position that a good, a number of people on the advisory board actually supported the registry's position that on the county mandate, and it's correct we're talking, the county mandate is supposed to be two and a half percent of the prior year's expenditures.
Right.
That vote on June 10th, 2020, did not comply with law. It's because you had what the expenditures were. And if you added the two and a half percent, the county mandate that year should have been voted as 3.8 because there was only 20 days left in the fiscal year. And there were people on the advisory board that actually supported the following of the law, that in chapter 64D, section 12B, the registry, it's a state law. It's not me. It's a state law that says the county mandate is supposed to be two and a half percent of the prior year's expenditures. So that happened, there was no lawsuit right away, because that was June 10th, 2020.
That was 2020.
Right. But then it just keeps coming. The IT, you know, again, a funded and approved position. It was in the budget. And again, you know. And again, you know, everyone knows where they stand, it was a two to one vote, and again, that was the IT thing. So this didn't happen, and I didn't run to court on June tenth, twenty twenty, when that vote went down. I thought it was the wrong vote, but, you know, it is what it is. But we're in court, we're in court now, because you can't keep taking deeds excise money. And even while this case is pending, you double down and take three point eight million dollars on June tenth, twenty twenty-three, which has been accumulated for over thirty years. I didn't come up with this system. This was here probably when Peter's dad was here, deeds excise has been collected. Barry Hannon was the register. I didn't become county commissioner until ninety-two. That money accumulated under register, Cannon under register, Harold and myself. But it was always, the deeds excise was forty percent, there was thirty years of doing it. So you might look at it, did I, was a suit filed? Yes, we filed the suit, because, and we didn't do it right away, but at some point, you can't keep hitting somebody and not expect it, hey, there's disagreement, I guess we gotta go to court to resolve it. So I'm just, you know, asking in the interest of fairness, I didn't appeal the first court ruling, that went the registry's way. It's, you know, just some money put in, whatever money you put in. I hope, I mean, do you all think seven thousand dollars is equitable?
Compared to what we have, I, I don't know.
That's to be determined.
To be determined, yeah.
I won't hold it to you.
All right, other than that, are there any other things that we should be focusing on? I think it looks the rest, seems pretty level.
There was any.
I mean, your own, odd state, transportation. Miscellaneous.
It's needed.
Computer supplies.
I think that was.
Yeah, but they all look pretty much even, looking through it.
And again, I appreciate the opportunity to maybe clear the air, maybe not, but on the legal.
So we're talking about, excuse me, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Legal, professional tech, and I agree to talk about printing.
Yeah.
Printing.
Yeah.
Printing, yeah.
The rest look pretty standard, they look like they're all, you know. Computer supplies, how would that be? Is that like, what do you have, computer supply? Is that IT or is that you, here we go again, with the new departments, we look at that differently? Maybe, you got computer supplies. I mean, is that something?
Like, I know, like, say, for instance, office machinery, I know that's maintenance contracts and supplies.
I'm looking at, yeah, Bill, so go to, five, three, I got five, three, six, three.
Five, three, six.
You've got a, oh, I see, it was zero and O.
It's zero and O, yeah.
Oh, zero and O, okay, okay.
But look what was spent before, but I mean, but I hope you understand, there's office and pay, well, it's, you know, it's easy to handle. But there's supply chain issues there, but it's, if you want to put money there.
I wish we had the money, we're looking lean these days, but how's the registry seats doing so far?
I mean, it's like, yeah.
I think tomorrow's.
No more, it's like anything, I mean, the good news is we are in Norfolk County, so you get some luxury of the deeds excise, which you depend on. And the transaction fees, you know, are still, I think, gonna run higher than what was estimated, but, you know, transaction fees, when refinances dry up, the transaction fees that you guys get a hundred percent on, there's not as many mortgages and all that, so I think the price is, it's still limited inventory, so the prices, you know, don't come down as they would in other areas of the country, so.
Home inventories, atrocious, although.
They say that.
There's nothing else.
And a lot of people who might want to upgrade, are you gonna upgrade when the interest rates were seven or eight, that come, you know, supposedly coming down a little bit? I mean, why are you gonna upgrade to a nice house, and yet you're going from a, you know, two and a half percent mortgage, three percent mortgage to.
The only glimmer I have hope, I've seen it, kind of thinking about that whole, very controversial, very controversial, the MBTA overlay that the state proposing, and that's to produce more housing and produce more units, which potentially indirectly would affect, you know, sales or something like that. But I'm not saying, you know, but I've noticed myself personally more requests for people that want to subdivide into smaller units, so could be something there, but home sales are down.
And the spring market is always traditionally better, and clearly, you know, December, January are not great. But, you know, we're, you know, still pretty, you know, deeds excise money is still coming in.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the registry?
I'm over that, any else for us?
No.
All right, I'll move, we take this under advisement.
Second.
Thank you for coming over.
Great.
Next engineering.
When's the next, the next thing to this now?
The actual vote on a budget will be.
We have a calendar, I'll be happy to send it over.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it has to be before the advisory.
So far, we've been keeping to it.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, end of March. We can look that up here.
All right.
All right, there you go, all right, there it is, thank you, good seeing you.
Piece of cake, Pat. Piece of cake.
Thank you.
Okay, engineering.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Yes, Director Colonel.
Good afternoon, Patrick.
I was here, his memorandum is dated February seventh, starts off his budget presentation is pretty straightforward.
Yes.
I just want to ask you on the outside, Patrick, do you have any legal expense in your budget?
No, Chairman Shay, I don't at this time.
Okay, well, let me ask you something. We have a matter on here today, it's a town of Foxville, which we're gonna act upon. Last week, we had, maybe another one on the town, Stoughton, this and that. I want to get it on the record that obviously we pay our attorney to OC, although this one with you, you're a full-time employee. He gets paid out of our other legal budget, correct, John?
Correct.
So all these other things. Get paid on, does any other department on the registry deeds are legal?
Our treasury.
Treasury is legal.
Yeah.
School does, yeah.
And so I know the school does, okay, I'm under that, and the treasury has all that.
He does.
It's not our one. But it comes out of that figure that registered flown around, whatever it is.
I'm confused, so the registry has, I'm sorry, the treasury has its own appropriation, he happens to use our attorney.
Okay.
But he has his own mind to pay for services that he needs support on.
Does the municipality have an ever lawyer?
No.
Does, well, the IT department, its infancy doesn't have a separate lawyer.
No.
Okay. Okay, I'm Scotty. Since we're being blamed for everything, I figure we should take over all the legal expenses that come out of it all. I mean, we pay bills that are incurred by the engineering department in the course of their work, in the course that he's right away working, I mean, you know. And I'd be happy to participate in writing down the legal budget, but it just.
Well, maybe it's time for us to have a discussion, maybe not today, but.
Well, within this question, that's what we're getting to.
Maybe we should have a county municipal offer, just like towns have town council, right?
I think we do, but I don't think.
We have, we have one lawyer for labor, we have another lawyer for contract, I mean, we're all over the place.
That's true.
Scotty, we have several lawyers.
That's a very good one.
Maybe, it might be worth just saying.
Those figures he been throwing around includes the labor lawyer, who has nothing to do with this particular case.
That's right, but maybe we should take a look at that, and maybe get one firm to handle it all. Maybe put it up to bid or something, it's a thought, might save us money, but.
Patrick, it's nice to have you here. Your project looks great.
Thank you.
Okay, this engineering budget, he doesn't have a lawyer, so we can proceed. Anything way out of whack here, not really, just?
I do have a reach, so.
Go ahead.
I, my first two pages, when you read it, it's about adding a position back in that was previously funded.
I see that.
So I understand the economic conditions that are present, and we're in a spending and hiring increase. So this position that I'm looking for in FY twenty-five, I, you know, my request.
Survey crew chief.
Yes, this is to try and get the wheels fully running, and we're trying to do this for a few years. The, I asked for the position to be funded with the understanding dependent upon available funds in FY twenty-five at some later date, so that if the position was approved, the funds became available later in fiscal year, that then we could post the job and actually hire somebody any time in FY twenty-five, if the funds become, you know, available in the budget, based off of what's taken in. So the, right now, I have one senior crew chief and one regular crew chief. I have project managers and myself that work field and office. So it's hard to have projects that require a lot of research and calculations in the office. Work fluently when the person who does that is working in the field for a month or two on each project as well. So it's good to work field and office, but it's taken away the, it takes the projects longer time to do the projects. It's, you know, the private side, you'd have two, three guys working on the outside, and then the dedicated guys would stay inside and be working on the office part. So that's the reach, is to add that funding back in, depending upon available funds. So given that, I added in the position for survey crew chief, so that's one increase. There's basically three increases, one would be for the funding of that position. The second increase is due to contractual obligations based off the collective bargaining agreement for the two, for union and non-union, the two and a quarter percent increase, and also for union step raise. And then in adding the position, there are some other items like clothing allowance and education reimbursement that were increased if the position is added. I think that's, you must round it up. The only other thing that would be longevity is probably based off the years of work. That's a slight increase of a hundred dollars from last year, so education compensation, if we added the position, add five hundred dollars. And then the last thing that I'm looking for for an increase is related to computer software. We increased it last year, and I'm looking for a small increase of a thousand dollars this year due to additional purchase of new equipment and the customer care packages and firmware renewals that go with that. It's an increase of like five point two percent, so from nineteen thousand up to twenty thousand a year. I also submitted capital purchases, depending on funding that's available. The best, you know, I'm open to whatever's available at some point in the future.
Okay, any questions with Patrick?
So you want to add the position, but you don't want to fund it, like when we vote the budget, vote to include that position.
Well, I like the.
Going full.
If funds are available.
If he wants to fund it, if we can, but if we can't fund it, it's zero, and then maybe fill it later.
All right. Fun on funds. If it's zeroed out, then I have no ability to hire anybody, so.
Is there accountability? You're busy, I know you're busy, we all know you're busy, you're always something going on. I'd be curious to see from you, though, a breakdown of maybe like what, in terms of the types of things you're doing for our towns like this particular year, and then compare it to a prior year. I bet it's gone up, it has to have gone up, has to. The takings and Stoughton alone is keeping you busy, we know that, and I had caves in Canton, you had something in the over. You're everywhere.
Size of the projects, Commissioner. So some of the projects that we're still working on, in Midway, we're working on a half mile long project. It's, it's gonna be done, and we're working in the office on it, and we worked over the summer. It takes time to draft, we did an emergency job this fall, it took about three, three and a half months in Dover due to drainage failures, we jumped, dropped everything, talked to the other stakeholders from the other towns, went over and took care of Dover's, what they needed in this office, at the design engineers now. So, you know, we jump around, so having that.
Would this be, let me rephrase it, now I'm thinking about how Commissioner Shay and I both were out there on the campaign trail, we're running all over the county, yeah, and so it's great to know, even for ourselves, let people know what we're doing. Is it possible for you, without too much trouble, if you put together just a little blip about the county engineering is working on these projects and give an update? It doesn't have to be elaborate, it could just be, we're out, you can't.
Actually tighter than that, you might want to just go through all the different towns that you've worked on, you know, even like State last worked in Brooklyn a year ago, you just might want to say, we're out this project.
Over the past year.
That kind, that kind of thing, so it's always nice to have that.
It's great for the advisory board, great for us, not just for us, because advisory board meetings coming up and what people look for a budget, wouldn't be a bad thing to say, here's all the towns.
We could just, if we could give, we could show them, like, you print it out, and say, oh, and the person, they're gonna go right, they're gonna go right to their town, right?
Yes, unfortunately.
Okay, this is what we got, pretty neat.
With some of the size of the project we're working on, we've only worked on, you know, a handful of projects last year, but they're all pretty good size, like really large, so. And then what we do is, we work in a couple of towns, we make sure we try and keep moving around through the county, so we, you know, touch base a couple of times, and I explain that to the BW directors and their town engineers.
I think there was one in Dover, you did?
Yeah, we just finished one.
Yeah, it was, I just jumped out, it was Dover, I know Stoughton was in there, Kent a couple of years ago.
We even just, I think he did something in Sharon, too, to do with the police and fire station, he visited the other night.
Bellingham, we, you know, we move around, so right now, we're doing a couple of jobs in Midway, we just started another job, the Midway Community Farm.
Yep.
It's a boundary survey in topo for them to add on.
And not to mention the work you do even for the county, like, were you involved, a little bit the Aggie School, too, did you help out or something?
I give assistance.
Some assistance, yeah, so, you know, anyway, so.
And on the last item I wanted to bring up, I'm glad you're all sitting down, so I need to tell you something.
You need to.
There's a rumor that the van has been built.
It's coming?
And the van has been delivered to the Ford dealer, and the Ford dealer has sent it out to get outfitted with the.
And it's paid for, right?
Yes, from, it's from almost three, three years ago. So the van has, it's been produced, and I haven't seen it yet, but rumor has it, it's been delivered at the Ford dealer and is out to get outfitted with the safety lights and the equipment inside.
So Ford dealer down by the river, by any chance?
It's okay.
Van down by the river.
Yeah, that's not, we're gonna go there.
John, you had your hand up a minute ago, I forgot.
Just to retreat to Commissioner Stady's question, Patrick, you provided the kind of information Commissioner Stady is referencing. I know we cover it in our annual report. There's nothing to say, we can't take that to another level and base it on our website. So we can have an annual report of the projects that have been included by your office.
Right, right.
We don't need a tremendous amount of detail, but I think Commissioner Stady brings up something that presents both the pride and work you folks do, it's worth the breath.
Absolutely.
And project it out, so if you can put something together.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you, Commissioner Stady.
Great idea. I'll move, we take the budget under advisement.
Second.
We'll be voting on these a couple of weeks.
I got one last question.
Okay.
He's gonna ask for the, the crew chief, another survey crew chief. How do you price that? Do you just price it what you think?
It's been, historically, it's in the job description, and it's in the contract, based off of, you know, existing union employees as a range with a gradient steps, based off experience and skill level.
Did someone, it could have been your predecessor, did we try to fill this before?
Yes, it was.
Wouldn't get anyone?
It was posted for the first half of FY twenty-three, from July through December. I had four applicants, they weren't at the level that I would, we didn't hold interviews. The market's really tight, and the private sector's paying a little bit more, so it's been hard to pull in a track quality people.
Okay, okay.
I wouldn't just hire anybody, I would, you know, I'd make sure we get some of this quality with experience.
That's fine, that's up to you. Okay.
Thank you.
John, one more.
One of the point, I don't think you reached it yet, Patrick, but his submission does include commissioners' request for capital money. I'm receiving that information from the submissions, we'll put that under consideration, but at this time, I will not be recommending a capital budget for FY twenty-five until we close FY twenty-four and see what kind of resources we have, but when, and if that happens, we'll draw upon requests, some of the ones Patrick put us back in today.
Okay.
Thank you.
What was the capital request again, on that?
I know we're starting to go.
Yeah, yeah, what's that for? Okay.
Well, since I submitted this a month ago, one of my copy of hard drive went down, and we repaired it, so now, now I got the history on that, and it's nine years old, and it's time for a new copy, so I might have to switch around what the request was, from a plotter to a copy.
Only asking a question, again, not trying to put anyone on the spot, we paid a lot of money for it. Is any of these things consistent with the Abraham Report, or is that not the same thing? I'm talking almost, the Abraham Report outlined capital requests and our program, are we taking a look at that?
Yeah, we, we've been working right in, I think, in sync with, uh, the recommendations in that report, where uh, office equipment's been replaced through, uh, IT approval, we've been working on survey equipment as it gets end of, end of life and, and abuse. Updating in, in the last, each, the last two years, we bought new robotic instruments that are used up on the field every day. Um, and then these are more like office, uh, uh, equipment, uh, that needs updating, we have a plotter and, and a, and a copy, and then we'll be, have a breather for a little bit.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Good seeing you.
You, you're the next item on the agenda, Patrick, so we'll.
Okay.
Okay, this concludes budget hearings for this week, who do we have next?
Um, we're gonna fill the gap with, um.
County Commissioners Office?
That's right, County Commissioners Office will be before you.
I would be.
To give my page to.
Best RCP.
Big red? So we'll have the Commissioners Office, our RCP, such as it is, it's thirty thousand, weights and measures, which I know all of you are anxious to look forward to. The treasure, the treasurer's office as well. Uh, so we'll have, uh, in IT, sorry. You'll, uh, that'll be the completion of all the budgets for FY twenty-five. Following that, we'll turn it over to the County Director's Office, and we'll be spending the next few weekends balancing the budget, to have something prepared for you by late March.
Okay. Number fourteen. County Engineering Department request, vote to authorize Chair to sign a mast dot contestation that required filing for a mast dot order taking on Foxborough Boulevard and Foxborough Mass, plan and written instrument has been filed in Norfolk County Commissioners' records, volume thirty-two plans, two oh two three, one and two, Foxborough. Briefly, Patrick, I think that already said it.
Yes.
It was in my paperwork.
This is, uh, 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 taking the, uh, the Mast DOT did, um, on, back in November twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-three in Bellingham. On, I'm sorry, on, uh, it's, uh, Foxborough, on, uh, Foxborough Boulevard.
Right.
And, um, the, so the day's wrong, I just read one, it was in the previous one, Bellingham, but the, uh.
Got it right there.
They've already proved it, they sent it in, we filed it into the County Clerk's records that we have in, in the plan, uh, book, that, that those plans go into.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
You're gonna make that vote, Richard?
Sure. I, I move, uh, the board vote to authorize the Chair to sign the Mast DOT at a station that require filing for Mast DOT order taking on Foxborough Boulevard and Foxborough Mass. Plan and written instrument has been filed in Norfolk County Commissioners' records, Norfolk County, volume two thirty-two, plan two two. Crossed it out, is it oh three or?
Two and three.
Oh, three?
Yep.
For these one dash two, Foxborough.
Yep. Chief wanted to.
Motion made in second, it all in favor?
All right.
It is a vote, that concludes the matter of.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Great job. See, there's another town right there, Foxborough, add them to the list. Thank you.
Unfortunately, that was performed by the state, we just.
We decided.
Okay.
Okay, number eighteen, I'm sorry, we go to the County Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of brief updates, as I just mentioned to Commissioner Stady, uh, next week, we'll complete the three-week conversion of budgets from the departments to the County Commissioners for FY twenty-five. Following that, we'll engage our, um, our, our schedule to, uh, close out and present a balanced budget to the Commissioners, I think by uh, March twenty-seventh is the date.
That's right.
Following that, we'll get it ready for the advisory board by April tenth, I think, might be thirteen.
That'd be thirteen.
Sorry. Uh, so we'll be working towards that schedule aggressively over the next several weeks, and we'll be in touch with any questions or issues that come up. It will be a challenge to balance this budget, I think when we started, I mentioned to you, we were out of balance by, uh, over a million dollars, I think. We have five, if I'm not mistaken, um, so it is a concern, but we will achieve what we're trying to do here. Um, the only other thing I wanted to call out was, uh, we have begun looking at the years of service dedicated to various individuals who served Norfolk County, um, last summer, we had an employee who, uh, reached fifty years, an employee of the registry. Uh, she chose not to be publicly recognized, but we nevertheless admire, uh, the employee's commitment to Norfolk County. We have two others that are upon us, um, one you'll see next week, that's John McGowan, he just passed twenty-five years last, two weeks ago. And, uh, Mr. Michael Page from the Registry of Deeds also has just celebrated twenty-five years with Norfolk County. We will break forward these, um, individuals that have reached certain milestones as they come up on these, uh, noteworthy deeds. But these two individuals, um, we believe deserve your attention and appreciation on behalf of Norfolk County. We'll have citations for each that you can sign, and we'll send them directly to the employees in recognition for their service, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Anything else for the Director?
Just wanted to comment, Mr. Chairman, a great book by RCP, terrific book they put out. Uh, just a good job by all those that responsible.
I meant to mention it, too. Yeah, Robert was very proud of that.
Yeah.
Excellent work done, it'll be widely distributed across the, uh.
Great.